If you'll please join me in the invocation, Councilmember Voskis will lead us in that today.
Heavenly Father, as we begin another year of service to the citizens of Odessa, we ask that you recharge our souls and renew our hope. We ask, Father God, that you take away our worries and our regrets. Heavenly Father, we look to you to clear our way and protect us. Finally, Father God, we ask that you guide us with your love, that you give us your joy, give us the wisdom and the guidance to make the right decisions for the betterment of our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Mayor, I didn't know you were Mrs. Mayor today.
That's okay.
I didn't know where you're banging at. Whack it out.
So, we're going to discuss the SPOT, West Texas Soccer Association, having an agreement with the city of Odessa. Is Andy Martinez or Sergio Leva here? Come on up to the podium.
I'm Andy Martinez, this is Sergio Leva, we're the owners of the SPOT West Texas. Just to kind of give you a brief background, we have, we're going on our third year. Just to give you a little bit of background of how it all started, we started with nine teams in one age bracket, three years ago. And we noticed that there was a big need for soccer, local soccer at a competitive level. There's always been recreational soccer here, but over the last fifteen, twenty years, there hadn't been anything competitive. So, that's when me and Sergio started our league. We called it the SPOT West Texas. And our first season, we had the nine teams. From then, we were able to grow to boys and girls. In our very first full official season, we had thirty-two teams. From that thirty-two teams, we were able to grow to forty-nine teams, to seventy-four teams. Last season, we were able to have a hundred and eighteen teams. This season, we're projected to have a little over a hundred and fifty, around one hundred and fifty-two teams come in. From the Permian Basin, we're looking about a hundred and twelve teams that are going to be from here locally. We're looking about ten teams from San Angelo, about twenty-seven teams from Lubbock, and then we actually have one New Mexico team from Hobbs. And then this season will be our first season, we're actually bringing in a team from Amarillo that will be making the trip to play soccer here. We currently have an agreement with the Permian Basin Sports Complex, and currently, all of our games are being played there. So, what we're looking, what we're coming out for today is just to see, we truly feel that, just proof is in the pudding here, the numbers show, there is a big calling for, one, we know sports, and obviously soccer has never always, you know, been in the top. It's been a lot of football, but we really feel like there's a big, big calling for competitive sports, for soccer. We really feel like Odessa could be the hub for it. And so, that's why we wanted to come today and just kind of talk, one, introduce ourselves, let y'all know that that is going on here in the city, and see what kind of agreement, or see if, you know, maybe something in the future, we'd be able to work with each other on.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yes. So, what kind of agreement do you want? What kind of agreement are you looking for?
So, we're looking for something facility-wise. So, one of the hardest things, obviously, is facility here. Having, one, parks for our kids to practice out for the local teams that are from the Permian Basin, and then looking for the parks and recs part of it for actual games and tournaments as well.
So, you do know we're building this brand-new sports complex, right?
Yes.
That has ten fields on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's one of the main things, too. I will be honest, we will be pretty close to maxing out with even what we're at currently with those ten fields. But that's kind of what we're looking for, to see, you know, what we could do to get our foot in the door, to see if this might be a possibility for us as well.
In an ideal world, what number of fields would be the best?
Um, so, just being honest, I think our growth is going to max out at really about a hundred and eighty teams locally. I think we have continued that growth, but honestly, there's just a certain amount of teams, right? Right now, we're probably seventy to eighty percent of teams are already coming to the SPOT and playing at the SPOT. So, in a perfect world, about fourteen to sixteen fields is what you would be looking at. We cater a lot to out-of-town teams. One of the things that I feel like helps us be successful is we are bringing these teams from out of town to come in and play us. Most of everybody that plays soccer here goes to Dallas, and we've been able to divert some of that traffic back to Odessa. And one of the things is because we cater, we don't play every weekend, we play every other weekend, and we play two games every other weekend. So, we cater to those teams to come down, so they're staying. You know, they'll play like a ten-thirty game, and then they'll play like a three or four-thirty game. And then that way, they're only traveling here one time. So, that's part of the reason we need a little bit more field space, is because the amount of games that we have to hold on those bi-weeklies.
Age group?
So, we start at six-years-old all the way up to fourteen. So, we've been continuously growing that. My ultimate goal is to be able to go through all the way through high school. The problem is currently, all these high school teams are already going to Dallas, and it's very hard to pull those. So, we want to stay growing at a steady rate. So, instead of just saying, hey, we're going to, you know, offer all the way to eighteen when it's not going to be beneficial to everybody, we will slowly grow those. But as we're growing these teams, and we're continuously growing next year, for instance, we're going to go to fifteen, because all the fourteen-year-olds that play with us will be fifteen at that point, and we'll continue to grow that age bracket as well.
So, how many full-size fields do you need?
Currently, where I'm at right now...
Because the smaller kids don't play on full-size fields.
So, what we do is, we base everything on eleven-by-eleven size, which is essentially a football field. So, it's a hundred and twenty by fifty-five yards. So, everything that we base, even if they are little kids, we break it down horizontally, and we break those into three fields, or two fields, or into one field. And so, when I'm talking about actual field space, I'm already doing the calculations of breaking it down to how many small fields we can break into one.
So, we already have small fields built here, a lot of them. So, that's why I'm asking you.
Okay.
How many small fields do you need besides full fields? Because with the ten fields that are going to be over there at that new stadium, that's more than enough to have a tournament every weekend.
The ten fields, we would be able to work off of that.
Because you're not going to find anything bigger in Dallas.
Correct. Yeah, and so, that's where we would be able to, we would be able to work off of that with over the two days. The only thing with that, we have talked about it, is for local teams, we'll have to probably start Friday. Even still do the three-day every other weekend, but have Friday games. Other than that, we would be able to work with those fields. I mean, I understand ten fields is probably going to be the max in this area, and so, it's going to be something we're just going to have to work with.
So, the only reason I was saying that is because we have other, other places here with fields built in them for younger kids.
Councilman Haney, can you move the mic? We can't, I can barely hear you over here.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
So, all of these fields that we have, or small fields, you could book those up for your smaller kids and keep the big fields for your older kids.
I understand what you're saying.
So, you would be splitting out some stuff.
So, the issue that we're going to see there is, a lot of these coaches, especially the ones that are traveling, they coach multiple age groups. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot more difficult to have them going into different locations. So, if you're talking about a location that's across the street, that's going to be, you know, obviously, one thing that we can work around, but when you're having them cross-town, it's going to be, that's going to be a problem that we'll run into, is if we're having two different locations.
We have fields already built, so we wouldn't have to spend a bunch of money to build other fields. We already have them here. It's what I'm trying to say is, until we get started, before we start building a bunch of fields, we already have them here.
Yes, so, we have, I've already talked to Matt, I apologize, I misunderstood. Yes, so, we've already went and looked at the Comanche Trail Field, and then, I'm not sure what the other park is that...
Floyd Gwin.
The Floyd Gwin Park as well, to look, to see if that would work. Just looking at it and looking at the structure, we do feel like between those two facilities right now to get us by, in the meantime, we do feel like that would be a possibility for us to work with.
Let me ask a real quick question, Andy. Andy, right, Andy?
Yes, Sergio.
Sergio.
Sergio, right, yeah. So, we previously talked, and maybe I'm, I apologize for being late, I just lost track of time. So, real quickly, you've never worked for the city of Odessa or the Parks Recreation? You mostly primarily were in Midland to a certain extent, is that correct?
Correct. So, when we first started, the first three seasons, we played at the auxiliary fields, which is Astound Stadium now. And then, when we moved from Astound, we moved to the Permian Basin Sports Complex.
So, real briefly, what were your issues that you had with the rec? And why it necessitated you to create a team, a travel team? Because you actually started with your daughter, and it grew within the last three seasons. This being your third season, am I correct?
My third year, my sixth season, yes.
So, what were, just bullet points, what were your issues with the, with what was happening in rec ball in Midland?
So, with the recreational program, I feel strongly, it is really a necessity that it can be used for the city. However, there was nothing competitive for the kids that did want to take it competitively. With the recreational system, essentially, you put your name in a hat, they draw a team, and you're just put with whoever and whoever, whoever you get put with. There's no, your coaches are volunteers, there's just no structure in there in that. It's recreational purposes, it's for fun, everybody gets a trophy and everybody moves on. And so, what we were looking for is, we were looking for something competitive. The city of Midland at the time, they didn't offer anything that was competitive. So, that's where we started. And the reason we had to go to the auxiliary fields is the recreational program would not work with us, because we were a competitive league and they were recreational. So, all their fields, all their field usage were for recreational use and only recreational use.
So, basically, skills were stunted?
Correct.
If not, just basically, there was no room for improvement? Let me ask this question. What you guys, what this league does, do you guys provide instruction? Do you provide clinics, things of that nature?
So, currently, right now, we deal with everybody at a club. So, everybody goes to a club, US club, so there's safety courses and things that they put on themselves. But every manager and coach is picked by the team and by the coach. So, we don't designate everybody, so they're responsible for their own, their own coaching, their own licensing, and everything at that point.
Mr. Martinez, are they all licensed coaches?
So, you have to go through like a God Sport, which is a US club. It's not necessarily like a Coach D license or Coach C license, but yes, you do have to have your Safe Sport certificate to be able to be a coach or a manager on the team.
And are you also under, because I know, because I used to be a club coach, and my youngest kid still plays club soccer. Are y'all sanctioned under North Texas, or what?
We are sanctioned through US club.
Okay.
Yes, so, you have USYS, which is North Texas, which was the hub for the longest time. US club came in probably ten years ago, started kind of making a name, so they have kind of split. We are on the US club side, and so, essentially, we're our own entity with US club.
So, the other ones in North Texas?
It's USYS, but it's considered North Texas.
How long have they been around?
USYS.
For a long time.
So, you're the new kids on the block.
So, US, yeah, so, USYS has a lot of rules and restrictions. And I'll just give like a brief example. If you're a recreational team, and you are from Odessa, and you want to go play in Midland at the Turkey Shootout, you would have to have your Odessa recreational facilitator admin essentially sign off on your roster and get it approved to go play a tournament in Midland. With US club, coaches and managers manage their own roster. We could go to Utah, California, Florida. You don't have to have approvals. Everything has been done and has been verified, and you're able to have that freedom. And that's what US club gives for you, and that's the reason we went US club, is there's a lot less limitations.
And with the younger age groups, are they considered academy?
They are, so, anything under ten is considered academy. Ten and older is considered club, because you do sign a one-year contract with your club once you turn ten years old.
And you're talking about the older age groups, it is hard to get them to, because we go to Dallas and San Antonio every weekend. But we are looking for, we, you know, we tried to bring the WTPL, start that over here, but it just wasn't competitive enough. And there is, there is, there is a calling for that. There's a lot of club teams that are the U-16, U-17, U-18 age group that want to stay here, which is why we're putting this complex. So, if y'all could work on that, I know there's, the demand is there, and I know people would stay and to play with this.
Going even back to what Andy started the conversation with, is we're trying to limit the travel. If, you know, not everybody can compete or wants to travel all the way to Dallas just to play games. We get tournaments and stuff like that, it's nice to get your group together to go. But really, we just started this in the sense of providing an opportunity for these teams to play here. Because club soccer's been around for a long time, it's been, I've gone through five kids myself with it, and my youngest is going through it right now. And that's really where it all came about. The whole idea of this was to provide opportunity for them to get consistent games here. And to be prepared to travel to the bigger tournaments and national tournaments and stuff, that you kind of start the chain of elimination in Dallas, which is the closest area for us. So, most people will still travel, but not everybody wants to travel every weekend. And so, usually, most teams travel and will travel less, so they'll go like once every other weekend or once every three weeks and play multiple games. And so, that's where we came around ourselves and said, okay, well, let's provide that opportunity here, and maybe limit how much teams have to travel, and they kind of just cut down costs of what it's costing people to play soccer. And so, that's, that's where it's come down. And now, we're currently, we're playing at UTPB right now, and we're just looking for a place to grow and extend what we're trying to build.
And I've always wondered who was, who were playing, because I've seen, I've seen you playing there on the weekends and stuff.
Yeah, and so, it's, it's all competitive soccer, it's all competitive teams. None of it's recreational. The clubs, teams, whether it's a dad on the team, or whether it's an official licensed coach, they all have to have some sort of certification to train the kids. But they all provide their own training, and they all provide their own management of their teams. We are just the place for them to play. And so, we aren't often, we do hold clinics. We have close relationships with local coaches and stuff in UTPB and their soccer program. Other coaches that have, some have professional backgrounds that do hold, that do have clubs here, but they have their own teams and multiple teams. Some people have one team, some people have multiple teams.
Maybe you're toured the Comanche East, Comanche West, and the soccer, and the soccerplex at Floyd Gwin? Have you seen those facilities?
The one we didn't go to was the Floyd Gwin, but I have been there prior earlier this year, but we did...
Max, real quick, let me ask you a few questions. What about, going back today, what about the Central, the old, not Bel Air, what's it called? It's over there by, it's west of the Central Boys Club. That used to be a baseball field, now it's just a green space with a small back, backstop. Bel Air is on Thirty-first and Dixie, if I'm correct. That's the old Bel Air, right? That used to be a baseball. All that's gone. What about those facilities, south of the Central Boys Club, and then the old, off of Meskingum? I think it'll be Tenth or Eleventh Street. There's a, there's a green space there, and then, across the street, on the other side of Meskingum, that, that's not big enough. Is that being utilized at all?
It's not being utilized. And right now, we're currently trying to do an assessment of what we have available, because we're not only having to do soccer, but we're going to bring in football, baseball, settle down where, on the space that they've been using. So, we're really having to go throughout the whole entire city and figure out who's going where, how many teams we can accommodate.
So, one of the issues in the past that created a lot of firestorm in the UTPB deal, and beyond that way prior to that, is that there was a reluctance found by former director of Parks Recreation to have multiple contracts with different organizations, especially club. For the reason is that they want to deal with it. Dealt with one organization that wind up rising up to the top, and we can't do that through this community. We have to treat everybody equitably. So, club soccer, not only soccer, but all other types of sports were locked out. And this is something that we want to change, but we also recognize that we have a situation of inventory. Unfortunately, some members of the OSA, and I've got two witnesses, that didn't want to go to South Odessa because it's South Odessa. We have great facilities throughout the city. This council has been very adamant about growing recreation and competitive sports throughout the city as a whole, which will be inclusive of the city. And so, here's another question that I'm going to ask. How old is our master plan for the parks? What year are we in? Because if we're going to continue to get state funding, we have to redo that. So, we're getting...
Twenty-one.
So, it's in twenty-one? Okay, so, in a couple of years, we're going to be back to make that reassess. So, I'm glad you're doing that. We'll have to reassess McKinney, because we'll lose property there, and then look at neighborhood parks, because the dynamics are changing. We will then have the complex, which starts making our choices of what we want to do. Because the thing is, is that, what these gentlemen are saying is that they want to be part of the complex. They want to be able to, but you're also saying that those ten fields are going to get, you fill it real quickly. So, we need to start looking at an alternative plan to create other recreation for multi-use fields. If I understood that right, the last time that I spoke with you.
That's correct.
Well, and one of the reasons that we implemented the, the ten percent of the registration fee is to, so we can put that money back into the fields, because there's a lot of maintenance that goes into fields, especially for soccer, because you don't want them rolling, you don't, you want, you want a pretty smooth field with good, good grass. So, um...
We have to invest in that.
And that's just never been, that's, that's never been a part of the equation. We never had that money. So, it was just, it was just, now that we can get that, I think we'll see fields improving where we can... You know, some of those fields that you're talking about, behind the Boys and Girls Club and at Bel Air, would be great options, I think, for practices. I don't think for games, just because of logistics. It'd be hard to get to those, have a lot of traffic around those in their neighborhood areas. But the fields at Comanche, at Floyd Gwin, those are great access. I mean, they're, they're off of major highways, or major, major roads in the city. So, I think that'd be, and we can put money back into those to make those fields more playable and actually get the use that I think has just been missing out on those, on those complexes.
So, one of the things that I want to say is, just across, across all the cities within this area, it's always been the norm to have a Parks and Recreation Department, but it kind of subleases to groups that can handle youth sports within our system. In order to be recognized, in order to move to the next level, you pretty much have to be under a city's double lane. Here, what John and I are trying to bring to the Parks and Recreation here is to open up those avenues and bring everybody under our control, bring everything back into house. The people that are currently able to do this, and, you know, they have bigger staff, they have some facilities, not necessarily what we have, but we're just trying to bring everything back in-house and do it right. From my knowledge, we've never had the ability to charge whatever fee to any association here in Odessa. And again, like Mr. Matto said, we want to bring that in and bring in, bring it in with a fee so that we can turn around and it'll help us out on the budget side. And then, everything that we select, we're going to go back into, into the fields. So, it's a win-win, aren't they?
So, Max, would it be easier to put turf down on those fields? That way, there's no upkeep on them, there's no, you don't have to get out there and water them, you can put turf down? And what's the life, and what's the life on turf?
There's a lot of ways that we can do stuff. Currently, I took Mr. Martinez and Mr. Leva out the other day personally, and we went through the fields, and we located that at Comanche East and West, all the fields are playable. They're in good condition. Currently, we have the waters off because we winterize it. The things that we do lack, that we're going to have to get a hold of, is goals. And so, after a decision is made, we're going to have to purchase some goals. I know that council a couple of years ago had bought some goals, but they're no longer in our possession, so now, we're going to have to refurbish all that.
Really? When was this?
This is when we, when we gave them to UTPB, remember we...
Well, we didn't purchase, oh, they purchased this with Bushman's money.
Yeah, we were giving, yeah.
Yeah, we gave them the money, well, we turned around and just took Bushman and gave him back their money.
So, right now, in order to accommodate SPOT or whoever else is coming in, we're going to have to get goals period for the new locations.
Moveable goals, not, not permanent?
Yes, sir. Everything that was taken down hasn't, hasn't been put up because of that.
Yes.
We're going to be in that situation moving forward.
Okay.
Max, there's a, there's a piece of land, I don't even know if you're aware of it. I wasn't aware of it until something happened over the holidays. But anyway, there's a, there's actually a park on Billy, South Billy Hext? Are you aware of that, behind, behind Ronnie Range's business that I-20? Billy Hext runs, Billy Hext runs all the way, you know, down to Service Eight. There's actually a park that runs all along the back of his property. It's got oak trees on both sides, there's no parking in it. And then, the houses are on the north side of it. But it's a huge piece of property, and I don't know, you might want to go look at it. I don't think anybody knows it's there. And I just stumbled on it because somebody had a complaint about kids riding their four-wheelers out there and stuff. And, but it's a, it must be three or four hundred yards long. So, anyway, you might want to take a look, and I meant to say something to you, and I forgot, so...
I know that one of the disadvantages that we currently have going, visiting with Mr. Martinez and Mr. Leva is the parking, you know?
Yeah.
It would be initially...
Yeah, we'd have to go to the parking lot there.
Which is great for the city of Odessa. We just want to make sure that we're going to be able to accommodate.
Sure. But there is a piece of property there, so...
Have we discussed any of the details with the, with the agreement?
Thank you, Max. You got anything else you wanted to add? Okay. So, that's what I wanted to get into. What are we, what are we talking about here, Dan?
We're talking about a facilities use agreement. Currently, with UTPB, you're paying one-twenty-five per field, per game?
I'm paying per team.
Per team. So, we would probably do a ten percent, because we want to be consistent on what we've done in the past and in the future. So, that's what we're working on. We, you've, we've already looked at what we, didn't we send that to you?
I have not, I have not seen that.
We discussed it the other day.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything we discussed, I thought it was happening after this, so...
Well, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask council for consensus to move forward, and then I'm going to send it to you.
Then y'all get in discussion. Go ahead.
So, are you guys going to help with the upkeep on the fields, on the grass fields?
So, currently, what we've been doing in the past is we pay a fee, and then that fee goes towards it. So, we currently have not, it was, everything that goes to our fee goes towards that.
That's part of the ten percent fee that we're willing to pay.
And then, that'll go into the Parks Department that will offset the cost in the budget to be able to do the upkeep, the winterizing, and things of that nature, for the usage that we've never had in the past.
Correct. We briefly talked about the ten percent, we had talked about the one-twenty-five, but yes, I mean, those are numbers that we...
It would be either or, it wouldn't be both.
Okay, yeah, so, we had kind of had, you know, a slight conversation about that, but yes, that is what... We're not asking for anything for free, and we're, we understand, you know, we got to give back to the community, and that's the reason we do this, and we got to give back to it to keep those fields.
I wish you would hear, twenty years ago, when my kids were playing, because we drove to Dallas for three years straight.
And then, you get there, and it's slightly raining, and they cancel the games? That's the worst. Everybody that's been there knows that's, it happens quite often.
Okay, so, we have a heavy agenda, we've been thirty minutes on that. Gentlemen, I appreciate your presentation.
Mayor, I just want a consensus, if you want me to move forward.
I'm going to ask for a council for consensus, councilman...
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll move forward.
And then, we'll plan on bringing it back to you within a couple of weeks, hopefully.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time, everybody.
All right, we're going to, our item four, discuss the amendment of the police budget to include the cost of Axion Office Safety Plan, Chief Burkey?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Sures.
This is a request to amend our budget to, to add six-hundred-thirty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to pay for the Axon Officer Safety Plan. This is a plan that was originally approved, a ten-year contract that was originally approved by council in January of twenty-two. And then, for whatever reason, the funding was not put in that budget. So, we came back last year in April, and it was approved again. And again, for whatever reason, the funding was not approved for this year's budget. So, we're coming back again to put that, to ask for that funding, and hopefully, that, moving forward, that money will reside in the budget for the remainder of the ten-year contract.
City Manager, since we've already approved it, do we really have to re-prove again? Or do we have to just put the money into an account where they can expend it?
I think it's, and Dan, correct me, I think it's probably good practice to go ahead and approve it again, since you passed a budget that it wasn't in. You want to amend that budget to put it in there.
But we need, we need to...
Has the money been identified through the finance or where it's at?
I haven't looked.
Okay. Do we have an answer? Do we have finance in here?
So, can I ask you a question?
Do you I mean, did you catch this or did somebody else catch this since we already approved it?
Well, we we actually caught it when we went to pay the bill. That that's when it was caught. We went to we got an invoice and we went to pay that. And during the last budget cycle, we moved a lot of our software costs were moved to IT. So when it didn't show up in our budget, we thought, okay, it's it's at IT, right? So we called IT and said, hey, this is another um another bill for you guys to pay and like it's not in our budget. So then we call finance and they looked for those those funds and it was not approved in the budget.
The Axon, it's the uh the body cameras, everything that we had.
So yeah, Axon is body cams, in-car, it's um the tasers.
Tasers.
Uh drones. It's our reporting system now. It is everything, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Online and watch it and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
The alert. It's it's just a ton and ton of uh of of software items there.
Ms. Ben, on your research, uh, where would you start? Would it be coming out of IT? I thought I had read that in the report that this money would be coming out of the IT for the coverage of the of what's been expended.
So it is supposed to, yes. Um, I think just with all of the the turnover and then the zero-based budgeting being a new method of our budgeting process, it just got left out this last time. So we'll have to identify where the funds are supposed to come from, but yes, they are IT related.
This is before we did the zero budget. And this is when we first found out that money had never been placed by the former administration. Then we went to zero budgeting. So it was that that wasn't a result of zero budget. This is a mut uh a result of mismanagement. And so, okay, so so from what I understand and I read in the report is that we'll be looking for it in IT or wherever it's at. And so what was the amount again?
About six hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred nineteen.
And Mayor, we'll bring. Mayor, we'll bring it back on the twenty-third.
The twenty-third?
Has this money uh been paid? Any of this money been paid out to this group for anything?
So the first.
Have we signed an agreement with them?
So the first two years of this have been. Um, that's what we we came back last April to. Uh, we were behind then because the 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 funds had never been budgeted. So um so we paid two years, um, which was one partial year and one full year last year. So it was eight hundred and almost right at nine hundred thousand dollars last year that we paid. So that so we're up to if we pay this, we're up to date. The this bill, these bills are generally due in November.
Okay. So we got some catching up to do. All right. So Dan, are we taking a consensus right now or do we need to go and prove it?
We're just going to bring it back.
Okay, so you're bringing it back in two weeks?
Yes, sir.
So you're right, it's mismanagement from two times ago. But because of that, it never got wrote down. And so when we did the budget this time, there wasn't a flag there that said, hey, be sure to put this somewhere.
Yeah.
And now, I know Chief Gerke's going to have a red flag that's going to go up and say, make sure this gets paid for and Tony will. So we've got to make sure we have this noted.
And we've also already made notes on our budget process for next year to make sure that we specifically look for this and make sure it's allocated appropriately so we don't have to have this combination.
Got to love the bureaucracy, huh?
Don't like getting those invoices passed on?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can we get somebody to research all of this stuff that we're supposed to be paying to make sure we're paying so we don't get snuck up on constantly?
Yeah. I don't want to go too far outside the work session agenda, but one of the things that will allow that is where we start our audits, uh, looking at contracts right off the bat.
Part of the process. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, any other discussion on this item? Do I have a consensus to move forward to bring this back uh for discussion and possible approval in two weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good. We're going to move on to item five. Discuss um discuss this misspelled on this. Data, well, I got my eyes on that, that's why I saw it. Data terminals for OFR Tahoe delivery. How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you all?
Doing good.
Council, Mr. Mayor, good to see you. So we're here to discuss um the approval for purchase of seven MDTs. Those are the in-vehicle computers for the seven new Tahos that we should be delivering or receiving any month now. Uh, we're just trying to be ahead of the game, especially with those Tahos potentially going to show up within a month or two. Try to get these computers ordered. This includes the devices themselves, uh, all of the mounting hardware and the installation. So this is everything we need in both getting the device and getting it installed.
Any questions? How was your New Year?
It was great.
How's Chief John? How's Chief Con treating you?
Is this thing on?
I'm just I'm just wondering if you're ready to come over to finance.
He just got out of vacation.
You you know, you know, we're recruiting you. He's shitting on his head and hugging him, so. Every time he comes in or you present, that's one I ask. I'm going to keep I'm going to keep uh taking the temperature. I appreciate it. Mr. Marsh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Do you have any other questions on this? Any further discussion? If not, we're going to move on to item six, discuss the study of the odor issues of line Q within our collection system to be conducted by Correto Engineering. Mr. Miles, Niles, how are you, sir?
Good, good. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. In October of twenty twenty-three, the city of Odessa responded to an odor nuisance violation from TCEQ. The odor violation was at the Darrington plant. However, the last several months, the city has been receiving odor complaints along the sewer line feeding the Darrington plant. As a point of correction, we refer to this as line P, not line Q. That was a mistake.
Cause I thought so too. I was like, isn't this?
The line begins as a forty-eight inch fiberglass line and ties into a fifty-four inch fiberglass line before it ends at the Darrington plant. Corolla Engineering has provided a scope of work to study the odor issues for the line P to characterize the type of odor and the concentrations of hydrogen sulfide in order to make proper recommendations available to the city. Uh, the overall cost of this study would be ninety thousand dollars and will be taken from the wastewater R and R budget.
What type of timeframe to perform that?
Uh, six to nine months.
Does TCEQ have a they put a deadline on it?
TCEQ has not given us a deadline on that. Again, we responded to the violation letter explaining that we understand what's going on and that we're going to be taking necessary steps uh to mitigate the issue. So right now, TCEQ is at bay.
That line's not that old, okay.
Any further discussion?
And this is mostly because there's just not enough volume going through. It's just kind of just sitting there stagnant.
Volume for the pipe.
Okay.
That's correct. So there's options.
We need to find a remediate a remediation.
There's multiple options that we can take as far as odor control. So the engineering study is going to allow us to determine the best course of action.
Hang some of those little pine trees in the.
Any further discussion on this item? Council, do we have a consensus to move forward? Bring this back in uh two weeks?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Is Corolla going to be here in two weeks?
No, I they can be if you need them to.
Do we need them to be here?
It's basically a professional services group is what we're doing.
Then we're good.
Now, they're just going to come and.
Here's the one talking to them. So if we have any questions, we'll just refer them over to our city manager and then he can uh convey it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Niles, I appreciate that. We're going to item seven, this is one of your suit, discussing uh dechlorination system upgrade for the Darrington plant. Mr. Niles?
Uh, yeah, again, thank you, Mayor, Council. As we previously discussed in the December nineteenth council meeting, uh, the team at the Darrington plant would like to replace the sulfur dioxide injection system for dechlorination. Dechlorination is the process of removing residual chlorine from disinfected water wastewater prior to discharge into the environment. Sulfur dioxide is most commonly used for dechlorination. The team would like to upgrade the system to a vacuum system, which is much safer and less expensive as far as preventative maintenance is concerned. Uh, the current system is outdated and we're having a hard time finding replacement parts for it. We would like to use Global Treat Incorporated to replace the system at a total cost of fifty-seven thousand six hundred and four dollars. The funds would come from the maintenance improvement account.
Council, discussion?
Tell me the difference between the current system and I'm I'm sorry, I don't I don't.
The current system is just outdated, so they like to.
But how's it work? The difference of the way they work?
I I couldn't answer exactly how they're the difference in the way the two systems work. I'd have to have my maintenance technician explain that to you.
Okay.
Can we get that uh something written up in an email and just uh affect that to the council?
I can do that.
And then uh, yeah, yeah, before the two weeks that we can find out what we're talking about. So you're going from sulfur to vacuum so we can get an idea with.
Okay.
Mr. Niles, on here it says um the team needs to make minor repairs on the system, but they're afraid of making the repairs could damage the sulfinator and there's no parts for it to. So this change would avoid that.
Correct. They would be able to find adequate parts and make the replacements.
Okay.
They're afraid to touch it.
Yeah. Get a warranty on this?
Yes.
That will actually implement.
And please let us use it.
Any further discussion, Council? Any questions? So Niles, I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item eight, discuss the reallocation of the Corona virus state and local physical recovery funds, ARPA funds. Ms. Ben?
Thank you. Good afternoon once again. Matt is passing out the presentation so that you guys have a paper copy, but I also have flash drive.
Sorry, I'm going to use the flash card. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So as I mentioned, today, we're going to be talking about the ARPA funds that we received. Not too long ago, you all accepted the the second half of it. So, you know, we're all good on that. And now we have an amount that we are needing to reallocate. And so if you'll look at that slide with the SLF RF report, you've seen this before. We updated it with a couple of numbers. So you'll see the total funds that we have received is twenty million three hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. On the left, you'll see the amounts that have been appropriated. Um, and there is a difference under the eyes of the SLRF on appropriated versus obligated. So they have been appropriated, which means you all have decided you want to spend these monies on these certain topics. Now, we did include the mental health because it's to our understanding that it's going to be discussed later today. So we went ahead and and put that into our considerations beforehand. Um, and then over on the right, you'll just see what we have expended so far. So we have a total of eight million five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, um, eight, sorry, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars that we need to allocate. And so what Matt and I did and the rest of the finance team is we visited with some different departments across the city um to just identify some needs that we have across the board that are eligible now under this revenue replacement category um that we could use these funds for. So the revenue replacement category came came about later. It was not, as you know, part of the initial ARPA funds ruling. So this category has given cities a lot of flexibility as far as what we can use these funds for. Um, and this is straight from the interim final rule um here. So for example, transportation infrastructure, um, sorry, I can't see the. Tran- transportation infrastructure projects are generally ineligible when it comes to public health. But these are government services that the public needs. So one of the first departments that we talked to was Public Works. Um, we did talk with Joe and his team and made sure that the projects that they identified for us were going to meet the timelines that we have to expend the funds. So as you all know, we have to obligate the funds by the end of this year. And when I say obligate, that means we have to be entered into some kind of contract or have some kind of documentation stating that what we're moving on in regards to these funds is happening. Okay, so we can't just vote and say we want to allocate this much towards this. We have to actually get into something and back it up. And so he identified some projects here within District One. We have Intersection of Dixie and Eighth Street for a project amount of one million dollars. Intersection of Grandview and Eighth Street, also one million dollars. And then Crane Avenue from Second Street to Pool Road, four million dollars. And this one is unique because it straddles District Five as well. And then under District Two, we have East Ridge Road, Billy Hext to Fodry, six million dollar project cost. And then Dorada Road, Fodry to Mission, two million dollars. Within District Three, we have Twenty-third Street, Andrews Highway to Dixie Boulevard, two point three million dollar project cost. Fifty-second Street, Andrews Highway to Dixie, two point five million. And then Dixie Boulevard Forty-sixth to Walnut Avenue, two point six million. That's District Three. District Four, we have Dixie Boulevard to Grandview Avenue, six million dollar project cost. And then District Five, we have Sixteenth Street, Harless Avenue to Loop three thirty-eight for two million, two million dollar project cost. And then Sixteenth Street, County Road West to Harless for three million dollars. So all of these projects, once again, do meet the timeline requirements. And Joe said that we could probably get moving on entering into bids and things this year, this quarter or this half, first half of the year.
There's a little of every and of the district.
Well, didn't we discuss the last allocation meeting that we have with this? That we're going to do the two million dollars for the Rochester for the infrastructure?
I don't recall it, did we?
Yeah, we did. Cause Habitat for Humanity wants one of that properties, remember? They've asked.
Yeah, I've swiped some dreams.
It was definitely brought up.
We brought it up. We talked about a ten million dollars for the infrastructure, so Habitat for Humanity could build those affordable housing over there. Cause they've asked several times.
Put that into the discussion. Kelly, once again, how much how much money is available for expenditure?
It's eight point five million, just a little over that.
Okay. Um. Dixie and Eighth, Van Buren both, they're both in this necessity.
Both on Grandview, you know it?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I would say that e- even the Forty-sixth Street to Walnut, that is a that is a uh that's a gutter. And that is, that has been a problem for quite some time. I know that because I have a friend of mine that lives right on the corner, right there on Walnut. And we can't keep, he gets all the residuals coming in from the north, that whole neighborhood right there, past Forty-second Street. Uh, I mean, in the end, they're all, they're all um necessity. But I would suggest that everybody in in their district look at one project, try to prioritize that and bring it to the table and go from there. And then minus the two million that the count discussed moving forward for the Rochester, correct? Is that what we said?
Yes.
Infrastructure?
For the infrastructure.
Okay.
So so keep in mind around six million.
Six million, yeah.
And that leaves a little bit of a buffer.
Yeah.
Saying we're saying that's assuming that we're going to do the Rochester property.
I've got one question that has been nagging me because I want to make sure that we move forwards. The West Texas Food Bank, how's that qualify? Not with the rules now, but the rules in because we allocated it before. This thing's always changing. So it may qualify today, but at the time that we allocated the hundred and sixty-one thousand, I questioned it, how this fit? Because if you look at all the allocations, payroll reimbursement because of the coronavirus, we did the testing. Now, we reallocated, we only nine hundred and fifty-three dollars that we spent. We allocated how many millions of dollars for that? Yeah. Mental health hospital, uh, operating supplies, vaccination, all health related. My question then, as it was today, West Texas Food Bank, how's that? How did that qualify then? Or or does it even qualify? And are we going to have to be aware that we may have to pay this back?
No, it it did qualify under public health, just based off of, you know, during COVID, times were hard, people would need meals, stuff like that.
I want to make sure that, you know, everything we did, we're not going to wind up have to pay it back later.
Yes, sir. No, that one should be good.
Perfect, perfect.
So I have one more question that I I need to get answered because we got we've got Crane Avenue on there again and I swear, we we approved that and it's supposed.
Joe, I thought, yeah, I thought we had already approved monies for Crane Avenue.
Yeah, cause I understood there was money in the budget for that.
I thought that was probably.
Cause we had already. It hadn't even started, it hadn't been.
It's to my understanding, and I'll let Joe speak to this further, that there is funding for these projects in our, in our normal budget. Um, the idea is if we are to dedicate some of the ARPA funds to these projects, it then frees up the monies that were supposed to go to that.
Question is, what money does he already have?
Yeah.
And then that will make the mind up for you.
And that, that's something that we discussed in length.
Yeah.
Is this can be used for that, that frees up money to be used for things that don't qualify.
Okay.
So you just wanna, you just wanna move it around?
Yeah.
I wouldn't like to say it like that.
That's what it is. Which hands are peeling it in? You know? But I know we approved that project, so that's why I was, you know, I asked you the other day about that, Joe, and we talked about that.
Crane is moving forward, it's just a matter of how we fund it.
Okay. So is, is there a possibility that we can, can we see a list of what's already funded and what the amounts are?
That'd be great.
And, and, and kinda break it down per district, so every, every council member can see and then make a more informed decision of what they wanna go with? Cause everyone gets one project and then we'll, then the two million that we're looking for then, we'll, we'll, we just gotta find a, a middle ground for everybody.
So Mayor, you're pro- you're probably gonna wanna discuss everything again, once you get the list of what hap- do it two weeks again, works out, and this is what was funded?
Yeah. And then we'll move forward and we'll make a decision there and we'll, we'll, we'll narrow it down and move forward with it.
Okay. Well, let me go ahead and just run through some of the other needs that we identified. Uh, we also talked to Public Safety and Communications. They are needing an updated dispatch system. The system that they have is outdated and.
Just for nine-one-one?
Yes, that's correct.
That is outdated.
And it, um, experiences downtime, which causes delays, and that's a major concern for the safety of our.
Do we have an amount for that?
That is one that was actually requested to Seth prior to all this reallocation, de-allocation, and all of that. So I would encourage it to be strongly considered.
As was the.
Was it thirty thousand or was it, it seems like it was more on the original ask?
Yes, so the dispatch system has a cost of one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand. The, um, HVAC system update or replacement for the dispatch center was also requested and discussed with Seth, and that one had a thirty thousand dollar cost. So that's also on your slides for reference.
And this dispatch system, what we currently have has gone down a few times here lately. That can get people killed. So, let's, we all want our roads, but let's consider real.
That's why it's important to see what we already have allocated for some of these other road projects, that would free up money for us to use for something like this.
How much money is in a road project fund? You any idea?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but we can find out for you.
Cause my understanding was that we haven't spent very much in the last two years.
And we'll, we'll get you a list of the projects that are in motion and already approved and the costs and things.
Thank you.
So we also spoke to our fire department. They also have a lot of needs. Chief Cotton and his team have been working fast and furious to, to get things righted over there. They talked about, um, hiring and retention incentives, yearly cancer screenings for O F R employees, um, updates to a lot of their tools, the camera systems, vehicle needs, lots of vehicle needs there. Um, as far as, um, non-equipment related needs go, these are more big picture things, but they are going to need to replace firehouses two and three and also build additional firehouses. That's also on their, their radar and their long-term plan. So those are some needs that fire department has. Police Department, we have the demolition of the two-story parking lot, um, which does have an amount right next to it, two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand. We have the lobby public restrooms, two-hundred-and-eight thousand. Then we also have the modern, modernization of two existing elevators, so.
The elevators have to happen.
All of these needs are also, um, very important, as are all of the other ones. So I wanted to make sure that we discuss those. We also spoke with Kevin regarding, uh, utilities, so this is also from the interim final rule. Treasury encourages recipients to carry out investments in water sewer broad- or broadband infrastructure. Um, water sewer and broadband infrastructure all involve the provision of essential services to residents, businesses, and other consumers. So we spoke to him specifically about the Darrington plant. You all saw a presentation regarding that a few weeks ago. Um, all of the needs here, uh, on this slide particularly, of course, are not all of the needs that the Darrington has, but these are some of the needs that Kevin has identified as priorities, um, mainly in relation to safety of the environment for his employees. So we don't have costs on these yet specifically, but these are needs that are important as well, so we wanted to make sure to present them for consideration.
So are we gonna have the cost related to all of these? I mean, some of these don't have a number on them. So are they gonna give the cost to you?
It'd be good to have some of the costs on the fire department's list, just to, maybe we do some cart, some out-of-cart stuff, you know? We're not gonna be able to do all of it, but, uh, just so we.
I, I know the cancer screening is a priority.
Yes.
Uh, and so I think you have a cost per person on that. Uh, see if you can kinda identify your top three or five.
Just from that list, now?
Well, what, or, or whatever your priorities are, they're off, on this list or off this list? Leave that up to you, to give us that. Yeah. And then the, uh, on the fire, uh, on the police department, on the, uh, that's pretty, a low cost for the, uh, for the demolition. What's the rebuilds? What's that cost?
I, I think that is inclined at some of work.
Okay.
I, I think, uh, I think Mr. Beckar is to probably.
Cause it, we're looking at a demolition, where are we parking the vehicles meantime when it's being rebuilt?
Right, so.
The demo's easy.
That becomes an issue. You have, you have the parking lot across the street and, um, Second and.
Oh, that's true.
You have that parking lot. You do, there are some parking lots that we could use i- in the interim.
How old, how old is that thing? It was built in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three?
It, it, yeah, the building was built in nineteen eighty-two, so everything that you see there is, is.
It's construction, it's concrete issues.
It's basically junk and you shouldn't park in it. It needs to go away. We've talked with, uh, Chief Gurkey and his, and his crew. We don't really, there are some challenges with our current situation of where we're parking patrol cars, things like that. And we're trying to work through, what do we do? Do we build it back? Maybe that's not a good use of things. Maybe that's a good fenced yard that we have, things like patrol cars and all. Okay, where do we look? Do we look over at this other parking lot and say, do we build something there? We're having to work through some issues that, uh, this isn't a safe structure to begin with. And, you know, I'm told that things move around when you drive on it. So let's, where, where are we, where are we going with it? I don't know exactly, but there's gotta be a starting place, and the starting place is taking it to the ground.
Okay.
So what we've done currently with it, we don't park, we don't use it, we park, uh, extra vehicles there, um, but it's not driven on, on a regular basis.
All right.
So we have a lot to discuss in a couple of weeks. Um, because I know, I, I mean, remember, we put in some money just for the walkway from the, uh, police, uh, building to the, uh.
It's not worth doing. Again, trying to keep with the subject at hand.
Yeah.
And because we're talking about moving monies around and, and ARPA, that would be money that possibly could go to demolition, because we could rebuild a walkway that's like a bridge to nowhere.
Did we not look at any of the elevators or anything in the municipal plaza and City Hall? Did we even look at that? Let me tell you, I've been in the municipal plaza. I'll just take the stairs. Yeah, everybody, everybody knows what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'll take the stairs. I don't care how many floors I gotta go to, but I'm not getting stuck. But that is, that's a bad issue down there.
I can look into that if you'd like me to, yes. And I'll bring that number to you.
If we're looking at everything, might as well look at everything.
Right, exactly.
It doesn't mean that there's money for it, but.
Exactly.
It doesn't, doesn't hurt to kick the tires.
That's correct.
Now's the time to do it.
Yes, so this is just lastly how some of the other cities are using the same, their ARPA funds. And what we have put on this list is, you know, relevant to what I've presented, but you should see some of the, some of the justifications that other cities have, have used. I mean, just wild. But anyways, um, heavy machinery for city use, vehicles and equipment for fire, police, um, other broadband, water sewer, infrastructure, things like that. So there is a lot to consider, and we will follow up with you guys on those numbers in a couple of weeks.
Okay. All right, we got a lot to haggle on.
Thank you.
Just remember, as you're looking at this, you're talking about six million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure you're fine with ninety twenty, right?
That gets you stuck real quick when you start talking about roads and some of these major projects.
Yeah.
Kelly, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Just person to person, and finance and sitting where you are, those ARPA funds, they have to be obligated by the end of December, thirty-first of this year.
Yes.
Of course, they have to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six.
Correct.
But just the obligation of them, do you feel you have an adequate communication with the council and the information you need so that we can get those funds all allocated?
Well, so this is my first time presenting to you all about this.
Door's closing.
Yes, sir. So I feel like if we have this conversation in a couple of weeks and can get things allocated, you know, by the end of February, that will give our departments enough time to enter into those contracts or those obligations. We just have to enter into them by the end of the year, and so long as we expend everything by twenty-twenty-six, we're okay. So I think we're on a good timeline right now at this point.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, item nine, review proposal for the sale of the old fire station number six. Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I have John Harich here.
John Harich here, and what you have in your hands are the three proposals, correct, John?
Yes, we have, um, three proposals for the fire station.
And, and again, Mayor, Council, this is just to discuss, review. You'll vote on this in a couple of weeks, okay? It's just time for you to think about it.
And with the proposal, it was open for forty-five days. Um, I did not represent any of the clients. I only represent the city. I would not do a intermediary in this. We also ask for a cover letter from each of them to explain what they're putting in there. Um, and that is your second page of each one. The one on the top is the lowest offer, then we have the middle offer, and then the one at the bottom of your stack is the highest offer. It says what each one of them want to do with it. All three of them are aware of the asbestos that it has. All three potential buyers are here today, so if you have any questions for them, you can ask the questions also.
Counsel, I'm gonna bring every person, we got three proposals, so I'm just gonna bring them, uh, as they're in our packet. I'm just having them do a quick brief, three-minute presentation of what, uh, they submitted. If that's okay?
Sure.
That's good.
So we'll bring up their agent with them also?
I'm sorry?
We'll bring up their real estate agent with them also, or do you want just them?
Just them.
Just them.
Okay.
Okay, their agents are here also.
No, we need to hear from the agents. Now, then, then we start getting into a lot more things. Uh, so the first one is, uh, Peace Academy of West Texas, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just introduce yourself, just your, uh, uh, your full name and, uh, and your organization for the record.
My name's Hamza Kusac. I'm a member of the Peace Academy of West Texas.
Thank you, sir. That's all we need. And just give us a brief, uh, three minutes, uh, what your proposal is for the, uh, the fire station.
Yes, sir. He also has diagrams, drawings of everything he wants to do with it. So while he talks the three minutes, y'all are just gonna pass this around, since he'll talk for you.
We have it here too, John.
Oh, we have, we have, yeah, go ahead.
We only have three, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I also have a short video about it, if you would like to.
Can you pick up the mic a little bit? Cause it's hard to hear you, sir.
I was thinking my teacher voice would be enough.
Is it on? John, is it on?
Yeah, it's, I think it's on.
Thank you.
I have a short video, if you would like to.
Yes. Kelly, you wanna help him with that?
So that's how it's going to look from the front side, facing the road. That will be the entrance. And, uh, Peace Academy of West Texas has been established in two thousand eighteen. And since then, we have been organizing events, uh, educational, charitable, uh, events. And we have a little center right across the fire station. And it was enough for the first ye- couple of years, but right now, our volunteers, when we started, it was thirty-five people. Right now, we have seventy-five volunteers. And we are organizing, uh, several events, and our capacity, uh, at that center is not being enough anymore. I'm sorry about my excitement. I, I'm really comfortable in front of my teach, uh, students. You're a little bit older than those, but.
Thank you very much.
A little bit, but that multiplies my excitement a hundred times.
Not as pretty.
Yeah. So, so far, we have organized ladies coffee nice cooking clubs and hot meal distribution, especially during Christmas. We serve hundreds of people, uh, cooperating with some of churches, church. And we have a youth club as well, that organizing charitable activities. We have made a donation to, to Africa. They build a water well by all their efforts. I apologize again. Mister Orange Carice was supposed to be here, and he had to leave.
He notified that he was leaving on an emergency.
Yeah, he had to leave on an emergency, and I was a last resort, and.
Just, just, just show us the diagrams and explain to what we're seeing. That, that, that's, let's just keep it that simple, because we also can read what, what, what's going on, but I think this visual, uh, kinda helps.
So what we would like to plan with the place is, we are thinking about the budget for around five hundred thousand dollars to spend on the building. You all see the plans of it?
Mm-hmm.
Not this one, not that. That was our last event though.
Yeah, that's your summer camp presentation. You wanna go to the community center? Is that your arrow down there on the bar? Okay.
So that is the plan. We will have a ballroom. It's going to accommodate around hundred-twenty, hundred-thirty people, and it's going to be divided into two, whenever you would like to organize a smaller event. We will have four, five classrooms at the back, so we can organize after-school events, uh, after-school classes for the kids in need. And we will have a meeting room, and we will have a culture room at the back. These are, this is the, gonna be the meeting room. And the offices. And here is gonna be a semi-industrial kitchen where we can organize our cooking clubs, and our hot meals will be made, cooked here. And our hot meals will be made, cooked here. I didn't talk a lot, but thank you very much for listening.
Okay.
I would like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity. Actually, since we have that small center we have, whenever we get out of or get in the building, we always dreaming about having a big place, and when we see the fire station, all our members, volunteers were dreaming of that place, that we have a bigger facility so we can organize more events. Our aim is to build bridges in between communities, and that's what we have been doing so far. All our team, uh, teams are volunteers, I'm a teacher, we have other teachers, we have people who are working at the mall, businessmen, and we are all volunteers. We are doing it for, whatever our differences are, we are, we have one common thing, we are all humans, and we would like to connect all the communities under one roof. And rather than talking about the differences, we would like to talk about the unity. And all our events are supporting that, that our vision. All I want to say, thank you very much for getting us a little bit closer to our dream and giving us this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next one's gonna be the Rose James Children's Company, is that correct?
How are y'all? I am Austin James, I own Giant Consulting and Rentals, and this is my wife Lauren James, and, uh, she owns Lauren James Clothing Company. Excuse me. Um, so our plan with the building is, so with my company, we do, uh, pressure washing services, carpet and cleaning services. Unfortunately, over the past couple of years, we've lost a few pieces of equipment to theft at our current location. Um, none of them have been recovered, I mean, as y'all know, it's fairly easy to strip things off of trailers as fast as people are doing it now, um, and then just get rid of anything else they have that, that's easy to get rid of. What we're planning on doing in the shop center is, is just moving our equipment inside. It'll help us keep it from freezing, um, which we're about to endure, and then also help us from, you know, not having to deal with theft, um, vandalism, stuff like that. That's our plan, the shop is roughly a sixty-five by seventy-five, so we'll be able to house all of our equipment, we'll be able to operate, um, you know, our, our office front out of the shop side of it. Um, the other side, we're gonna do some of our clothing stuff. Um, it's got, if I remember correctly, thirteen bunk rooms at the time. Um, it's got a commons area, a reception area, a full bathroom with two showers, and a, uh, kitchen. Our plan with that is to do like a WeWorks, um, you know, have multiple spaces for one, one-person small businesses. Um, I've got a few friends, you know, um, realtors that are out on their own or they need office space, uh, they don't wanna pay for a full, you know, full rent, so we're gonna rent each, each of those rooms to a different, to a different company, that's the plan. Um, have a commons reception area and really give, you know, the idea of, of bringing more small businesses into one, one housing department. We're gonna use the area, you know, completely around it, plenty of parking, so there won't be any issues with, you know, overloading the community with parking on the streets or anything like that. Uh, we will also be able to use it for events for, um, our clothing store, we, we do that a lot, we have a lot of interactions with other boutiques, other businesses. Um, we, we've done a lot of community service work to kinda help grow that side of things, um, nonprofits and stuff like that, so that's, that's the ultimate plan. Um, to start out with, you know, we'll go in there, we're not gonna have to do really any, any kind of remediation or anything like that, as you can see, there is, you know, a bit of, uh, asbestos problem in there, um, we've already decided on that, it's, most of it's in the flooring. Um, everything is in great condition, so we'll be able to just, you know, cover that with new flooring and go about it that way, so.
So you're saying you're not gonna have to pull it out?
No, sir. Nope, it's in perfect condition, they kee- they've kept up with it, it's waxed, um, and it's, and it's sealed. So that's, that's kind of our plan on that.
Okay, I was gonna hold this, but how are you planning on, uh, resolving your parking issue? There's no parking for this, there, there's no parking that's attributed to this building, zero.
The parking on the, uh...
Does not belong to the station. That's all private parking that belongs to the school.
The Harmony School?
Yes.
Okay.
There is no parking at all.
Well, there, there's also the driveway. Um, we ran into this when we opened up the new, the new, uh, our new store. Um, so we've got options to put in the angled parking, where they don't back directly into the street.
Your plan is, is to lease to other businesses?
Correct, yes.
So you're gonna have traffic?
Right.
So there is a requirement that you have to have parking space per how many people you got coming in?
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna have to satisfy that, and I don't know what that is, but I will say that I don't think that the driveway, because you're gonna utilize that for another business to get the equipment in and out,
Correct.
that can, would satisfy that quota.
Well, the, the options of the bay doors that are on the outside are sufficient enough to hold parking spaces all along that driveway, and then you have your middle doors that you can operate out of.
Okay, so you're gonna, when you submit any type of plans, you're gonna submit it to planning zoning?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna have to, uh, have a remi- remediation for the parking?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, there's nothing we can do about that?
Yeah, no, that's understandable.
And so there's some, some options I think that you, you really need to consider?
Yes, sir.
And there's agreements that you need to be able to try to get into, because there are some options.
Right.
But I'm just wanna let you know full disclosure.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
This is something that we'll have to consider?
Yes, sir.
Uh, because if we don't deal with it now, then we don't wanna go forward and we not be able to say, no, you know, we, we just can't get there.
Right.
So we need to know that ahead of time.
Okay, yes.
The parking issue is a big concern.
Right, which I guess it'll be for pretty much anybody that buys it for commercial purposes.
Yes, it is, it is.
Okay.
So, okay. You have, anybody have any questions? We're just gonna listen to the proposals. Is there anything else you wanna add on?
No, that's all we got.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next one is Town and Country, is that correct?
Yes, and one quick thing I did wanna say, I did talk to the shopping center that is around it, that's who owns everything around it.
I appreciate it, John. That, right now, we're just gonna, we're gonna discuss it, and we'll, we'll talk the bit, the details later.
Okay.
How you doing?
I'm really nervous. Um, okay, so my name is Megan Prado, um, born and raised in Odessa, I, um, my parents owned Town and Country Drug before me, and so I, um, I kinda worked my way up from janitor. And so now, uh, my husband and I own it. Um, I met him in San Antonio, he's originally from El Paso, but, um...
It's okay, we'll forgive him.
I know, I know. But, um, Town and Country Drug and my father are the reasons why I wanted to be a pharmacist. Uh, there's this moment that I remember dusting shelves and this woman turned around and she said, "That Gary Warren, I trust him more than I trust my own doctor." And I wanted to be that for people, and so, um, so here we are, we bought it at the end of twenty twenty, as if that wasn't a crazy enough year, we decided to throw in a business as well, and so, um, right now we are under Woodcrest, the people that own those lots. Um, they are our landlords and, um, we would love to own our own building, we would love to, um, have the opportunity to put in a drive-through to better service our, um, customers. It's been there, we've been blessed to serve, I, three generations, I think, at this point, we've been in, in the business since nineteen fifty-eight, and so I would love for, if the Lord leads my kids that way, for them to have the opportunity to do what I was able to do and take over the family business one day. Um, but as it is right now, it's not, you know, pharmacies are everywhere, like, big box pharmacies on the corner everywhere, but I feel like independent pharmacies are kind of like the beating heart of pharmacy, like, we know our patients, we know when they're going in protesting, and we check on them whenever they come, come in again, you know, we, we know our patients. And, um, I feel like having our own, my voice is shaking, guys, I'm so nervous. I think that having our own building, um, it allows a lot more growth opportunities for our pharmacy. Convenience, right, like, we love two-day delivery, we love instant things, and coming in and out of a pharmacy is a deterrent for patients, and so we're really hoping to get that building, put in a drive-through. Woodcrest said they would lease to us, which is shocking, right, but, um, so that is an opportunity, we have reached out to them, so. The end.
One of the things, I know that when we first, when you, y'all reached out to me?
Yes, sir.
And talked about what you guys wanted to do, and I told you that there's gonna be a process. It has been a beauficey nightmare to get to this point. And so, one of the things that I have spoken to the staff has been the parking issue. A drive-through adds to that, I understand you have agreements, we have asbestos, we have things that have impact to the community, because that's already impactful because of the sto- uh, schools and, 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 and Dairy Queen. I, I go through there every single day multiple times, 'cause I live right down the block. So, I would really encourage to sit down, talk about your ideas, put together a pre-development meeting with the staff. That way you understand before you spend a penny, before you do anything, that's, regardless of where this council goes, to understand what the impact dollar-wise will be to you to retrofit this into going from a fire station to retail.
Right.
Uh, time over time, I've had a lot of people in this community that have been misrepresented by brokers, real estate, and other people, uh, contractors, everything, that get hit with impact fees that they were not made aware of, because they were, they were unaware that they can come to pre-development meetings before even, before they start. That way they know exactly what they're gonna be hit with, or have a better idea instead of going blind and getting second and third information, and most times it's inaccurate. It has caused a lot of headache, worry, and people to lose a lot of money, and I hear it from them all the time. And we could, and, and I know we have to do a better job as a council, as a city, to get that information. So everyone that's applying, please, go on to the website, ask for a pre-development meeting, have a detailed conversation, and completely understand what is gonna be your impact. Because when you're talking about a drive-through, things of that nature, then you're seeing more things. There is, uh, asbestos, that, that's gonna have to be remediated, uh, in order, you know, to be able to get the occupancy, uh, permits and things of that nature, so, it is, it, it is a huge commitment, and I know you guys are excited, I know you want all the real building, and so we have, this council has tried very hard with the staff, thank you everybody else for working on this. This has been a lot of hurdles to get to this point, it's very exciting, everybody, we want to make everybody's dreams come true, but, and in the end, it's gonna be one. And what's gonna, and, and this council will discuss it. So I thank you for, uh, doing all your presentations. I think what we as a council, can we, later on, uh, can we do this in two weeks, go into the executive session and talk about this? Or can we, do we have to do it in public?
We're gonna have to do it in public.
Okay, not a problem.
I have one question for you, are you gonna move the whole pharmacy over there?
The Lord willing, that would be the plan.
I'm sorry?
That would be the plan.
Okay, I was just curious.
I mean, you're renting right now, y'all been leased for how many years?
Uh, since nineteen fifty-eight.
Yeah, you could've already built a, a three-story, four-story...
Like, three times over, yes, yes. When it just keeps going up and up, and, I mean, they don't, they're not local, they don't really care, you know, they don't care, and so, um, I just love the opportunity to...
Yeah, that's where I used to eat hamburgers on Saturday.
Yes.
I know you were.
My dad used to go and get a ninety-five cent combo with, um, cheeseburger, Pepsi and fries, which sounds wonderful, back in the day.
Yeah, I had, they had a kitchen back there, we used to walk right, I lived down the corner. Every Saturday morning.
And then it caught on fire and they never rebuilt, which was good.
Well, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
I'm coming up to a consensus. Thank you very much.
Mayor, mayor, I, if we go two weeks from now, do you think that's enough time for them to do a pre-development agreement? Or what, what, you think we should...
No, you're absolutely right, I'm glad you...
Back it up four weeks, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's shoot for four weeks.
Okay.
Um, I think that, I really want to encourage everybody to come and speak to, um, uh, our planning and zoning scheduled, that pre-development meeting, you can go on and do it. And it's free to you. And ask every question, come up with a design, because you'll have everybody in that room that will impact you. Uh, I don't know, and, and there's a good discussion, will impact fees impact you? That's been the biggest, the biggest hit, because nobody prepares for that. And so, everybody's confused on that, and I don't know why, nobody comes and talks to the people that are there. And, uh, and so when you go on presumption, it has cost hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. And so, this is a free service that we initiated, and those that have come have basically been able to be aware in those hidden costs and that's it. So I think in four weeks...
So, so Mayor, if we back it up four weeks, and everybody comes into it with their eyes wide open?
Yeah.
To know that the impact fees are something that, they're, they're out there.
And, and, and that's for the, uh, for, for planning and zoning to discuss, I mean, I, I'm saying there's impact fees, there may not be, I, I don't know, you know, so I try not to deal with it, I, I just deal with the headaches in the aftermath. And so, yeah, and see, Joe's laughing because it's his department, it's, it's a finger point going on. It's, it's, this is the guy that's the one, okay, if everybody wants to know who's doing the impact fee, that's the guy right there. And then he'll say it's somebody in the staff. And so, he, yeah.
John, do you mind helping them get hooked up?
So, yeah, so this, yeah.
Yeah, but, because Mayor, they need to go into it with their eyes wide open, because there's so many different factors that...
And I would encourage your, if, if your real estate people are with you, the ones that are making proposals, invite them and have them tag along, because they're gonna learn a lot.
They're gonna learn a lot.
And it'll, it'll, it's gonna be beneficial. John, do you wanna add something?
Um, I will send an email out to all of the ones that brought an offer, how to contact P and Z to set this meeting up.
Perfect.
So we'll send that out tomorrow.
Perfect, that'd be great. What's that?
Cards?
Oh, perfect. And two... Well, I'll, I'll, I'll get off topic.
Don't go there.
Also, council and mayor, the city lots went on the market three days ago, and we've had several inquiries, so that's looking promising.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Um, any other discussion on Station Six? You have a question?
No, it was on the, the individual lots, but I think it's off-topic, so I just, I just, I just went.
We can discuss it.
Yeah.
We can, but then we'll be violating, and then somebody from Amazon will make a notification. Item ten, discuss paying UTPB forty-three thousand two hundred for the first year of the next two years, and forty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight for the second year. City manager, Beckmeyer.
This is something that doesn't require any action, I just wanted to make sure, in the spirit of transparency, people know what we are paying for this. We got, I got together with, uh, Mr. Venezuela, if I'm saying it right, probably not, I apologize. And he got me these, these two figures. The first one's the same we paid this past year, it didn't change, and then we had, I believe it's four-year, a four percent increase for the next year. And I just wanted to make sure it was out there, uh, in public.
And this is the...
The splash pad.
Splash pad. Splash pad for the next two years.
For the next two years.
Council, do we have any discussion? Any discussion, any questions of Mr. Beckmeyer on this, uh, for the two-year agreement with UTPB for the splash pad?
When would this payment be made?
Uh, the first one's due, has to.
Okay.
And so the splash pad will be open for the next two years?
For the next two years.
Question here, um, we're not going to contract that, we're gonna do that internal, we're gonna run it?
That's my, that's our plan, right, Max?
Is that the plan, Max? City's gonna be running it? You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be the, uh, the lifeguard out there?
He's, he's the go-to guy on splash pads, most people know my opinion on splash pads.
Yeah.
They should not exist.
This is all before we got here.
Okay, now I'm curious, why is there a four percent increase? If it's already built, why is there a four percent increase?
That's the rent on the land. It, it's not that uncommon, we just had a lady that, uh, came up here with a drugstore that said they get an increase every time they turn around.
Yes, it's, it's the university doing that.
Yes.
Well, we questioned it too, we questioned the payment too. So, it's, we don't own the land, we own, we own everything above the land, we don't own the land. This is the pearls of building something on something you don't own.
Truly, truly.
That, that's right, it's, the community wants it.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing that there is no more business before this council, do I have a motion to adjourn by council member?
So, ma'am.
Swann, I have a second by council member.
Second.
All in favor indicating but saying not?
Aye.
Opposing indicating but saying nay? Motion passed, yes, we are...